Thank you. Thank you for coming for the school committee. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Burgess threw me on the opening there. Talking in my ear. Okay. We are doing a workshop first, so we're starting at 6:30, a little early, so that we can go do a workshop about the South High School project. And so we're going to adjourn and go into the little, this is the little theater. We're going to go into the planetarium, right?
We're actually not going to adjourn.
Not going to adjourn. We're just going to move across, but we'll be off camera, so they'll need to put up the... Okay. All right. We'll be back at 7 o'clock. Sorry, we went a little bit over. We were getting a workshop, having a workshop on the Plymouth South High School project, and it's coming along very well. Lighting makes all the difference. We saw it first in a darker area, and then we took it out into the brighter area. I know I feel better about it being in the hallway, seeing it in the hallway, but very good. So let's move on with our regular agenda. Do we have anyone from the general public that would like to make a comment to the school committee tonight? Seeing none, move on to old business. Does anybody have any updates for old business? We made a lot of updates.
We did.
The last meeting, so the list is pretty... Anybody have anything they would like to get on a future agenda, any new business?
Actually, actually, it could be old business or new business. We've talked about it before, but I want to talk about it again for a second. We had, we were very successful, this community, with the full-day kindergarten that we all worked on last year, and it's a great, a great advancement of our public school system. And we've discussed the need for a sort of a revitalization of the health education program in the district. You know, it is the number-one goal in the strategic plan. And I know that the 10th graders and the 10th graders, you had a good sampling of that their first two years. But I'm thinking that K through 8, and I don't really know this, perhaps we need to get a report from central office if the committee, if the committee feels this is necessary, because I may be the only one. Where we stand on health education, the strategic plan refers to social, emotional health, physical health, welfare. And I think that we, as a committee, because that's our number-one goal, ought to have a good handle on what our needs are. And so I know we've talked about it before. Like the kindergarten program, I think it should raise to the top of our priority list, and perhaps in the next several months, get an update on where we are, so we know what we need. And I do think we, it needs revitalization.
I agree. And I know that was one of the things that Dr. Miestis has on the list for the retreat to go into a little more detail, but Dr. Campbell, do you want to...
Sure. And Dr. Sorenson and I actually had a conversation at the last policy meeting about this, and it's something that I've spoken to the superintendent about as well. We certainly, in my opinion, have room for improvement in terms of our health education. And by that, I mean not just the direct education, but really looking, as you said, Dr. Sorenson, on every aspect of how we approach health and wellness within our district, whether it's how the personnel bring programs into the schools, what do we do in terms of direct education in the classroom, how often do the students receiving health education, what grade levels, et cetera. And I know what that is. And one of my goals this year with the support of the superintendent would be to, to do that, to do a health audit of our programs and practices, and what exactly are we looking at district-wide in terms of health education and wellness, as you said, health wellness.
So the, my assumption is, and I'm assuming it's our assumption, when that audit is done, you'll bring it back to this committee.
That would be my intention.
So we can see what our needs are.
Yes.
And here's a side issue, just want to tell you all a side issue. Shortly after the close of school, a bunch of soon-to-be 9th graders got to go to the beach for the first time, probably without their parents for many of them. And I happened to see a bunch of them after they came from the beach, and most of the boys were burned to a crisp. The girls were smart enough to put it on, but the boys weren't. And it made me wonder, if they don't protect themselves from the sun, what are they not going to protect themselves from? And so we started to talk about this need, and I think we all agree.
Yes. And I know that was one of the ideas we threw out as a topic.
Yes.
Because it did come up, as you mentioned, it came up when we did the Parents' Night, and we were doing the open, public, long meeting right here in the cafeteria for the kindergarten, when we were going for full-day kindergarten. And several people brought up, brought that up as another issue, so. Any timeline on that?
I think to do it justice, it's going to take several months. Because I really would like to get our community involved in that process, to work with our nurses, work with our mental health providers within the district. You know, getting beyond just the, that direct teaching is, we said, as you said tonight. So I would anticipate, I could put a timeline together for superintendent, and we can talk about that at a future meeting, but I would think it would take a few months, really to do it justice.
To actually do it, but, but still, I think a session where we talk about what's the current landscape, what do we currently have by grade, or, you know?
That's easy enough.
And where do we, where would we like to see it go?
Yep. Absolutely.
We have an opportunity at a retreat to go into a little more detail. Yep, did you have your...
Dr. Soren, you just reminded me that I had a conversation with a parent a couple weeks ago at the Y, and it was, it's kind of, not on this topic, but reminded me that maybe if we could take a look at Plymouth South Middle School and how the 5th grade is like a small island that doesn't feel really connected to the middle school and doesn't feel really connected to the elementary school, and when they do things, sometimes they get left out. I know I've brought it up before, but if we just can take a look at that when we're maybe at the retreat, we can talk about it a little bit more.
So just the South, Middle...
5th grade.
Isolation, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sorenson. Anybody have any other new business? Then the superintendent's report tonight, we have Dr. Campbell covering for Dr. Miestis who's on vacation.
A well-deserved day off, even though I've bothered him a couple of times today. My apologies to him. First, I'd like to introduce our new assistant superintendent for human resources, who's right next to me, Mrs. Frye, who has really started, before she left South High School, was doing a couple of jobs, continues to support two places, but we welcomed Patty to central office, and she's doing a fantastic job and has been extremely busy since pre-day 1, I should say, even before July 1. So lots going on in the human resource department. Regarding South High School, the South High School project, as you saw, is going along quite nicely. In fact, the turf is near-complete, the football field and the track. They'd be laying down the tennis courts, working on the track surface, and the building, excuse me, the turf and the field will be ready for fall sports, and that deadline is August 12, so we have no doubt that they're on time and will be well-prepared to join the athletes on, in August for the fall sports. And lastly, it's a very, you know, it's a little quieter without the schools going on in summertime. Just a reminder that we're getting ready for the start of the school year. That's what we do during the summer, is get ready for the start of the school year. Opening day is August 29, and the superintendent extends an invitation to all of you to join us at Plymouth North High School for opening day, again, August 29, and you'll receive something prior to that. And that is it for the superintendent's update tonight.
That's becoming his big pressure day. He's got to top himself every year. Dr. Sorenson?
Just to follow up to what Dr. Campbell said, I had a conversation with the chairman of the building committee on Saturday morning about the fields, and what Dr. Campbell said is exactly right. The fields are on-scheduled to be completed by contract, the however is that everything has to go smoothly from here. There are a lot of details that have to take place, so it's still, it's still a big question mark as to whether they'll make that August 12 deadline, but they're very, very close to making it, from what I heard.
They're getting a lot of motivation from our project owners, project managers, too.
Take their time and get it right. Because remember, north, we had to do it twice.
Yes. That issue is not right, and...
And we don't want to do that.
That issue does not exist, as it did at north. It is a tight schedule, though. You're correct, Dr. Sorenson.
I should have asked when we were having our earlier session, but what are the plans now for the architects to present what they presented to us tonight with the selectmen and a bigger crowd, because I think it'll be one of our opportunities to have a joint committee meeting, the selectmen, the building committee, and ourselves?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
I made a mistake. There is no plan to have a meeting with the board of selectmen. My brain just said, Mr. Finnegan told me about three meetings, and following what we've done in the past, I inserted board of selectmen there when it was simply, there was a meeting with the superintendent administration, there was this meeting, and then there will be the building committee meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Correspondence, I know we had one. Who would like to? Ms. Badger?
I just moved out. How did that happen? A joint meeting is not working. It's a letter I know from else.
Miss Riordan?
Yeah. Let's see. "Thank you letter from the Science and Technology Engineering Program Coordinator, Allison Riordan, to the South Shore Nature Science Center in recognition of their continued work with the Plymouth students on the Ocean Drifter Project." Mrs. Riordan commented, commended the organization for the meaningful and relevant program from Plymouth South, Plymouth Middle School students, and she acknowledged the astonishing generosity of active kindness, their commitment to the local community, and thanked them for their time and effort and support.
Thank you. Now we have some program updates, and we're going to start with the developmental preschool.
Yes, sorry. Yes, as we recall from the last meeting that we had, superintendent was charged with providing the school committee with the recommended or nominated, not nominated, the recommended names for the new Mount Pleasant preschool location as we're relocating and asking for a new school ID number. The renaming of the school is in order, so the recommendations that were presented were a compilation of names that were provided from Mount Pleasant Community Administration. So they're here for your consideration and vote tonight, I believe.
Well, it says action.
I didn't have anything.
Yes.
Did anybody have any feedback for it?
I'm not familiar with the, I didn't.
Yeah, you weren't.
No. Don't have that information.
There wasn't anything attached.
It's not in the packet, but it was in a separate email, yeah.
I didn't see.
Did everybody see them?
No.
No?
We have them to...
We have the names, so we can list, I mean, we can...
You know what? So when do we have to have the name by? They already submitted a name, I think, but...
That I'm not aware of, if they've submitted anything. I know that the Karen Backman's office needs something to provide to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
The list is there.
Want to read the name?
Can you read them out?
Sure, sure. The names, we have Plymouth Early Learning Center, P E L C, Plymouth Early Childhood Center, P E C C, Happy Places Preschool, Happy Times Preschool, Plymouth Rocks Preschool, Plymouth Public Preschool. This was the first choice by the preschool staff. Long Pond Preschool, Plymouth Developmental Preschool.
What was the first church choice? It was the Plymouth Public Preschool?
Plymouth Early Learning Center.
Oh, Plymouth Early Learning.
That's what's on here, yeah.
There's already a South Shore Early Learning Center in town. I don't know if we want to...
So the anecdotal first choice by parent advisory committee was the Plymouth Early Childhood Center, P E C C.
Yeah.
Which one?
The Plymouth Early Learning Center. I think we discussed last time, right?
Yeah.
Early childhood.
That was mine, too. I think that was the only one I thought out of this list. Pelk.
Pelk. It's pelk, like a pelk.
I'm going to let you guys think about it.
Well, the only thing I want to say is that I feel very strongly that the word Plymouth should be in the title of any one of our programs, because should we, should we, you know, great, get great allocates, and it carries in the press across the country, and if we don't name the town, people have to look it up. So I think the word Plymouth should always be in the title, so.
I agree. So Early Learning Center?
No, the, the, this one.
Plymouth Early Childhood.
Because we already have an Early Learning Center in Plymouth, so why...
I think the other concern was, too, is having preschool in the name, for obvious reasons, so people know it's, it's for.
Plymouth Public Preschool? It's just the acronym can get, the acronym might be, should ask Mr. Harbert. What the media would do with the acronym. Yeah. So Plymouth Public Preschool. You like that? No?
I don't.
We wanted preschool in the title, we wanted Plymouth in the title.
What about the one the parents wanted?
Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
P E C C. I like that. It's a nice acronym. Makes the parents happy. Yeah. Gets me happy. I like that.
There is a, there is a South Shore Early Learning Center.
Yeah, that's right.
Right across from administration building.
Yeah, so you don't want to confuse it.
It's across and down. It's not literally across, but... All right.
Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
So it sounds like Plymouth Early Childhood Center. We're leaning towards, so do we have a motion to see how that flies?
Yeah, better initials.
Go ahead.
I'll move it. Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We got a name. There we go. Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
I do, I like the name. I like, I like that one.
Mrs. Frye, usually things go a lot smoother. I don't want to scare you on your first night.
We scared her long before she got here.
Yeah, weeks ago.
All right, excellent.
Okay. Project Contemporary Competitiveness.
Yes. This is something that I am biased, because I've had a lot of students go through the program, and this is really just a protocol yearly where the school committee is to name a designee, and I would be Dr. Miestis's designee. And there's been longstanding involvement by Plymouth, and actually, I have a great story about this program that, what I like about it is it gets students out of their comfort zone of Plymouth. This year in particular, there's almost 400 students involved, and there's kids from China, the Netherlands, as well as many urban districts, as well as suburban across Massachusetts. And one of my guidance counselors, Lindsay Sabo, was a former PCC kid, and she's really run with it. And last year, we had a young lady go, who was very quiet, never really, you know, challenged herself beyond some boundaries, and then she went, and her mom said to me, it was like a transformation happened. She was one of the leads in the Music Man this year, where a year before, I don't think she would have, you know, gone forward with it. So it's a fantastic program. We've also encouraged kids to contact the Educational Foundation if there are any funding needs for them. And this year, the group is actually involving 7th graders as well as a pilot study. So it's really about exposure and opportunities beyond Plymouth, not that Plymouth isn't fantastic, but just to show them what else there is out there. And July 20, I'll be going to see the kids in action. I have never been, but there's an opportunity for district leaders to go. So it's just a, it's a great program, so I'm learning more and more about it. But my kids at South have really raved about it, so.
Have a question? I agree, it's great, I have, it's a great program. Those things are fantastic enrichments. Is it for-profit?
It isn't for-profit, so to speak. It's really the funds which are higher to go to subsidize the program, so for the staffing, for different types of meals and whatnot that are there. So I don't have the exact breakdown, but I know it's not a for-profit organization.
Our concern in the past, because we love it also, we've voted on it obviously numerous times, and Dr. Gould was a big advocate for this.
Yes.
And our concerns in the past have been the location, so it's Stone Hill, which I know you, you have a soft spot for Stone Hill, and so do I, but it, at one point, she was saying that they were looking at Bridgewater again, to go back to Bridgewater, so it's more of a state, a public facility. Do we know, are they going to stay with Stone Hill?
I only went to one meeting, I went with Pam the end, middle of June, to one meeting to kind of see the group, and, but I can find that out, they start up again in the fall, and I can ask and bring feedback back to you folks, because they're really always looking at expanding it. And I was shocked at how many of the urban districts, which was great, I thought, as well for the exposure for our kids, so, but I can find out. They didn't mention it at that meeting, but sometimes it depends on facilities and costs of facilities for them and what they're getting.
Yeah, because in the past, our feedback was that Stone Hill is a beautiful school, but it might be out of a lot of people's reach, and it might set expectations from a financial point of view very high.
Right.
Whereas if the same program was in Bridgewater or some other one of the state schools, not only does it get the kids immersed in the college environment, but it also, you know?
Absolutely. I can ask, yeah, I can find out.
Unattended pressure on some families.
Yeah. And some of the classes are above and beyond, which is great, that they have the opportunity to take. But I can ask and find out.
All right, we need, this is an action item. Ms. Badger?
I have a question. Well, actually, I was just, at Mass Maritime, we have what's called the Advanced Science and Leadership Program, ASLP, with the Cape Cod Collaborative. So it might be something to kind of look at, and, you know, say this, you can pair, partner with a school. We do a lot of fundraising for ASLP, so maybe Bridgewater would do fundraising for...
I'll ask when, I know the first meeting's September 10.
Wherever it ends up.
Yeah. And I'll ask them that.
Dr. Sorenson? I think you want a motion to...
I would like to, yes.
To approve the, so I'll move that the superintendent, Dr. Miestis, and/or his designee, is hereby directed to serve as a member of the board of directors of the Project Contemporary Competitiveness.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Mr. Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
One other thing I asked Dr. Campbell if I could share, based on the prior turf piece, one thing that, just for you folks to know, because this spring was tough with no fields, and, but the varsity coaches have all gotten together, so there's equity with the boys and girls programs, when practice times are, like soccer's going to practice in the, right after school, later in the afternoon, at night, and they, they, it was unbelievable, they all got together and had a wonderful planning session.
I heard it went really well.
It went really well. They were, they're a tremendous group. I'm very, I'm biased, but I'm very fortunate of the coaches, so, but they, you know, football's at night, then girl's soccer's at night, then, we actually have to force the field hockey coach to play on the turf because of equity, because we have a little leg up with the grass, because there's not many fields left with grass. So Coach Finn is willing, though, they're going to have a couple night games, so, they, but there has been, and it's been communicated to the parents that meet the coaches in June, so the equity piece is huge. Having a female principal, former athlete, helps.
Very good. Next, we had on the agenda the contract negotiations, but since we last spoke, you know, Gary is not here tonight. I was going to move ahead with this tonight, and just, but I think it's not really, he should be here when we're discussing it and approving it, and even though we've gone over all the details and everything, still, I don't think there's a big rush, so the next meeting, I think we should put this item off for the next meeting, when we can all be together and, and bring that to a conclusion. Now we have a lot, not a lot, that was an exaggeration. We have a few policy updates, but some of them are pretty long, so this is going to take some time. So who would like to drive on this one? Dr. Campbell, you want to get started?
Kick it off, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sorenson and Mr. Morgan. We had a meeting fairly recently, once the, the subcommittees were reassigned, we set up a new meeting, and the policies tonight before you for discussion, there are four, really. We reviewed the, excuse me, there are three. My apologies.
Well, the last one you found to do nothing.
I am correct, yes. So there are three policies that were revised, or a new one, so fundraising activities and field trips were revised with some recommendations, which I'll turn over to Dr. Sorenson and Mr. Morgan in a minute, as well as a new policy regarding staff technology and social media use. Another charge of the committee was for the policy subcommittee to look at the facility's use policy and see if there was any changes that needed to be made in regards to that policy and the fee structures, which we've done as well.
So I'll just respond to the, on the first one, the new policy, the, the staff technology acceptable use policy was pretty much created by Julie Colby and her work with, her technical counterparts and other district and tech directors, and when it came to Mr. Morgan and I and Ms. Dr. Campbell, I think we changed very, maybe a word or two. We changed very little in this policy. So it comes directly to us from Julie Colby.
And that's it?
We'll take, that's it on that one.
Talk more about it, or? Go ahead, Ms. Badger?
This is just a question for somebody who isn't really technical, but like, are there still backup tapes? I read this in 7.1, and I was like, subject to disclosure, because they still exist on backup tapes.
Just say backup media.
I didn't know if there was like a cloud. It just, that threw me.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you...
In 7.1...
Under email?
Under email. It just says, in the bold portion at the bottom, it says, "Subject to disclosure, because they still exist on backup tapes," and I, it was just a curiosity factor whether they still exist.
Might be a choice of words, but it's backed up, the media is backed, yes.
If we just say backup media there, it'll be current, and it'll be able to change with the times. And yes, high volume is still backed up to tape.
Really?
Yeah. But not in this case, I don't believe, so we should say...
Media.
Media.
That's an easy fix.
Did anybody else have any feedback there? So that, that one was at 7.1. I had one, and it was 8.7. This is the only one I had, I thought this was really well done. It said, it should be noted that the Plymouth Public Schools name or logo may not be used on any personal webpage without permission of the superintendent. I think that should be without permission of the superintendent or school committee, or somehow, so that we're in that equation, because there are times when we've gotten involved with what's on scoreboards, for example, and things like that. So I think we need to be in that mix there.
And/or school committee.
And/or school committee, yes.
At the end of that sentence. So I'll make a motion that we approve this policy with that one change, and/or school committee?
No, two, two changes.
Oh, the two changes, right. And the tapes.
Tapes to media.
Tapes to media.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Good job on that one, that's, that was, that was well done. Next one is field trips. Who would like to do that? Mr. Morgan, you?
My screen's gone black.
Very little on this.
Yeah, field trips, we just made a few minor edits, 5.0, you can see that we added in here, subsequent to approval of the superintendent's office, and/or building principal and/or coordinator, and/or the director of student health services, all contracts required for field trips must be reviewed and signed by the business administrator. That was recommended by Mr. Cosson, we added that change. Then we did, then ended up moving some items down, so they just had got different numbers. Just trying to think what other substance changes that we put on this one, it was very minor.
7.7.
7.7. We added, should an emergency occur, the teacher is responsible for notifying the principal as soon as possible.
Versus by telephone, yeah. As we did with nowadays, with all electronic devices, you don't necessarily have to pick up the phone and dial.
Very good. And the rest of the changes are just the renumbering, right?
Correct.
And do we have a motion for this one?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Burgess moves it, Ms. Badger seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? favor? unanimous.
And the fundraising activity is pretty similar here. Again, it's very important for the business administrator to sign off prior to all contracts being signed between, you know, the outside vendor and somebody. So we, we feel the business administrator needs to be involved at the very beginning of any contract. So it's been added. And it's also been added to the, you'll see the next time a sheet comes before us for a field trip and/or fundraising, it's going to have a spot for his signature on it as part of the approval process.
But it is a form.
That's the only change.
Getting around it.
That's two oh, right?
Right. Two point zero, yes.
Do we have a motion for this one?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Burgess moves it. Do I have a second? Ms. Badger seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And the last item under policy was, the committee had asked us to look at the policy as it relates to a request that came before the committee, maybe two or three meetings ago. And we felt that the recommendation of administration to that group stands appropriate.
Good. So no action required there. Very good. Thank you. That was a lot of work there for you guys. Now reports, committee member reports. Anybody have anything they want to report out on? Ms. Badger?
I, we just had a Pilgrim Area Collaborative meeting, the last one, at the end of June for the year. And I just wanted to report out that they are using their surplus. So they were having some financial issues this year, but they're still, they're still in a good place. They just had to go into their backup funds, which they haven't had to do in the past. They're also having a space issue, as we all know that we caused a little bit of that. But, and they also need a letter to appoint Mrs. Burgess if it hasn't already happened. But those are my three points from the.
They need a letter to appoint her?
To appoint her. So that's like formal appoint.
Yeah, she will take care of it.
I figured, just passing it.
So they can note about meetings.
Yes.
Any other report that you would like to give us?
We don't have one of those meetings until September. But thank you.
No alumni, okay.
But she did turn over all the things to me. She gave me the book. She sent me.
My bookcase has room.
A list of all the meeting dates. She's done, she's done a very good turnover job.
Very good. Thank you.
It's like the White House.
Yep. You can have these notes too.
And Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative?
There's been no meeting since the last meeting.
Right. So we're good.
So the next one's, I think it's August 19.
You're correct. That's what I was about to say. It's August 19th, eight o'clock.
Yeah, you didn't remember.
That was great. I had to look it up.
And, yeah.
And I sent you the, the new schedule.
Yeah, I got, I'm also, yep. And.
And now segue right into the building committee.
That's this Thursday. No, yeah, this Thursday.
Yeah, but we had a meeting on June 9th. We hadn't reported. I don't think we reported on that one yet. Did we?
We did.
Yeah, the last meeting.
Yeah, we did. The last meeting.
That might have been the meeting I missed.
Right.
That's right. Yes, I did report on it.
And Mrs. Frye, now we have the personnel reports.
Yes. Delight time, but a lot's going to be coming very soon by the look of our offices. There's one certificated appointment, one classified appointment, one short-term maternity leave, two long-term leave of absences, and three resignations.
Thank you. And now the accounts payable warrant. Ms. Badger?
Where the school committee members have provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve reports and accounts payable warrant S zero seven fourteen sixteen dated July 14, 2016, in amount of $203,630.77 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Right.
Next one.
Where the school committee member, members have provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S sixteen July 1, dated June 30th, 2016, in the amount of $1,062,016.41 as presented.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. And I want to thank everybody for making themselves available to sign over the holiday break there, over the July 4th weekends. We got that warrant taken care of. Thank you. Minutes. May 2nd minutes.
Yep.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented for May 2nd.
Second.
Further questions? I have a question. Because I can't bring up my screen. Is that the one that I was?
You were absent.
You were.
Absent at that one. Thank you. That's what I needed.
We have first and second.
Any further questions? All those in favor? And one abstention. Next, we have the May 2nd, 2016 executive session. We had two of them. So the first one on school safety.
Hold on. Sorry. They're not available the second one? The executive session?
What's that?
They're not there.
They're not on there yet? Right.
Aren't they?
They weren't on there.
Actually, the next few are not on there, right?
Those two executive sessions.
So these are not on here.
Yeah, I thought he was going.
Let me get back to the. May 16th.
Before we go ahead on, on May, a couple of things on May 16th that I'm confused on, and I printed them out because I, on May 16th, we had an executive session, correct?
Yes.
And on May 16th, we had a regular meeting. The executive session minutes come out as Monday, May 16th at 7:00 PM. And as you read number one, and then it jumps down to fifteen point zero for the executive session minutes. So something's missed, something's wrong with the way these minutes printed out.
Yep. So the sequencing.
And I don't think that meeting started at seven o'clock. I think that meeting started at six thirty. Because I think our new commi, school committee member was, was late for that meeting. That's how come I remembered it. Wasn't that correct, your first meeting? Do we have an executive session your first meeting?
We went into executive, we went in after, though.
After. It was after the meeting.
I got sworn in that, that night, here.
Yes, I know.
But we went in after.
We went after that.
Yeah.
We went there late.
We had to make sure she was sworn in.
Well, I got sworn in too that night. So that, so the executive session was seven o'clock.
I think it was.
No, it was after the school.
It was at the end.
It was after.
We went in there after. We get out about quarter at 12.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, that was a long one.
Sorry.
Late day.
That's probably why it says fifteen, because it was probably the last thing, right?
Yeah.
So the executive session minutes have to reflect that the regular meetings began and then you go into it. And it was at the end of the meeting. So everything else got eliminated.
Oh, that's why you did it that way. Okay, well, that makes sense now that you've explained it.
So that's just the executive meeting minutes.
Okay, so then I guess that.
Then that's right. When in doubt?
Yeah, show.
Bet on, bet on Mrs. Dargy.
Well, having said all of that, then I'll approve the, the minutes, the open session minutes of May 16th as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. And now we have the executive session, the contract negotiations first. Do I have a motion? It's not in there?
No, it's there. You're good. You're right. You're fine. I, I move that we approve them.
Thank you. Second?
What?
We had two, remember?
We did?
Well, because they're two different.
Topics.
Topics.
Two different topics, yes. All right.
No, I, I think you're right, Margie. It's one meeting, isn't it?
It was one meeting, but it was two different topics.
Yeah, but it should be the same.
We approve the minutes of the meeting, not the topic.
And then we approved the sale on the, but it was the same meeting.
Yeah, it's true. Yeah, same executive.
Yeah, but I think when we went in, I think where you're thinking is, when we went into it, we said we were going in for these two purposes. So I think she's just trying to keep them lined up. But do we need to do that?
I'll second it. You don't have a second yet.
I'm not clear what you're seconding.
Yeah, nobody's.
Did someone make the motion?
No.
To approve?
Michelle did.
I thought Michelle did.
Michelle made a motion. Mr. Morgan seconded it. Further discussion? So their motion and the second was to accept the contract negotiations for May 16th concerning the Whiten Street.
Yep.
Contract.
All right.
And then the next one is the contract negotiation. The reason why Mrs. Dargy put them that way is because that's the way we went into executive session. She just kept them as separate topics, separate entries.
But in the same meeting?
But they're different topics.
So you, it's a different paragraph.
I'm okay either way. Either we collapse it and we say that.
I'm going to say what I said a minute ago. I really believe we're approving minutes here. We're not approving topics.
Yes.
So we either approve the minutes as presented or not.
Not quite. Normally, that would be true. But when you're going in for an executive session, you go in for a specific purpose. You don't say, I'm going in to talk about multiple topics. You say, I'm going into executive session for this and I'm going to go into executive session for that. Normally, we, in the past, we used to take two roll call votes. But then Mike Long told us one night that we really didn't need to do that. That it was understood that there were two separate and distinct reasons why we were going into executive session. And they're really separate and distinct.
But we're approving minutes.
Okay. But, so I guess my point is, is there, is there a harm to keeping them separate?
I think it's, I think we're creating a burden because in the future, if we went into a meeting and we covered eight topics, we'd have to have eight votes for eight topics.
Correct. We've never done that. That's never happened.
No, we don't usually, but that could happen.
It could happen.
I, I think we're better off just approving the minutes as they're presented. Makes it less complicated for us.
The only reason why I like this is it keeps in the record the fact that we talked about two separate things. Yep.
Is it, I'm going to ask a question. Does it have to do with open meeting law, like getting the information from one, so then it's, you, it's better to do it this way for open meeting?
I think it's also better for the sale to have it separately than not, not put in with the contract. You know what I'm saying? Like if the town wanted to act on it, they can pull that one, not have to pull this contract at the same time.
Then it ought to be two separate, two separate minutes then.
Two separate minutes.
Because right now, if the town wants to read about the sale of the building, they're going to get executive session minutes.
Well, and that's exactly right. So let's say the town wanted to talk about the, the first thing. Right, right, right. Yeah, no, I heard that already. So let's say they want to talk about the first thing and they were in the same minutes, they would get to read about the second thing.
That's right.
Which they don't have the right to look at.
Yeah.
So I think we stumbled back to Mrs. Dargy's original reason to keep them separate. And then, once again, she's on a roll tonight.
She's always right.
She's always right. So.
But the minutes reflect that. As you all know about my weak executive functioning skills, for the sake of, for the sake of, of future executive session minutes, then we would then approve the executive session of the 16th, Part A, which is the building, and then Part B, which is whatever else, and then Part C. Then we'd have to do it that way. Because then somebody would have to request Part A, Part B, or Part C.
Exactly. And that way they don't get to see something else that they weren't supposed to see.
Then that, I'm okay with that. Right now, it's presented as one, though, on this sheet, right?
No.
No, it's two.
It is two.
Nine point five and nine point six.
Yep.
Yep.
No, yeah, I'm talking about on the minutes of the 16th, on this sheet. They're, they're on the same sheet.
Are they on the same sheet or is the introduction, just, just the roll calls on that sheet?
Yes, the roll call.
That's just the roll call? Okay.
Yeah, that's just the roll call. You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one edit. Under, for discussion, under, in, into executive session at 10, 11 PM, it lists the different organizations that we discussed. It should be Pilgrim instead of Plymouth Collaborative. That's my revised.
Pilgrim Area.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative instead of Plymouth Area Collaborative.
Good.
At the bottom of page two.
I.
What?
You look at the.
Did I do it wrong?
Admin comments on ESP.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The admin comments on ESP regarding my name mistakenly used for Dr. Majestas.
Context. What do we?
If you look at the, if you look at the, the minutes, it refers to Dr. Campbell.
Ah.
Instead of Dr. Majestas.
Okay, so that needs to be. So with that correction, and the other correction, so the motion is with the two corrections.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Mrs. Badger.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, it was Mrs., Mrs. Bad, Ms. Badger made the motion, Mr. Morgan.
Badger made the motion, Mr. Morgan seconded it.
Excellent.
And we had all that discussion.
unanimous.
All those in favor? unanimous. Now, the second one, it's the same, same process. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented for May 16th, executive session B.
Ms. Badger moves it, seconded it by Mr. Selly. And any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you for your support on that one, Ms. Dargy. That worked out. Obsolete equipment.
I move that we.
You're just ripping them up tonight.
I'm just ready. We dispose of the obsolete equipment.
All right. Dr. Campbell, did you want to talk about these at all?
Just that the PCS request is obsolete robotics equipment that does not function, is 21 years old and doesn't, doesn't really work with the new technology that's used in our robotics program here.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes. All right. Now we have obsolete books and materials from Plymouth South High School. First?
Make a motion to approve the proposal.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Oh, she does.
Mr. Selly seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Again, unanimous. And the final one is federal furnace books and materials.
I'll move that.
Mrs. Burgess moves it and second. Ms. Badger seconds it.
I'm just saying.
She and I are both right there.
Just waiting.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And unanimous. Very good. We moved through that pretty good, even with the earlier meeting and, well, overrunning.
That's great.
Why do I feel like we're missing something, though? So.
We didn't.
We didn't. Okay.
She didn't.
So then with, without objection, we're adjourned at 7:55.